Recording in progress.
We're live.
We're live. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Grove One Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, August the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Let me introduce everyone at the table up here. We have Rebecca Oldham, our town administrator, on my left, Kathy Castren Ellis, selectwoman, Jason Naves, selectman, myself, Daniel McDonald, Mac Pronto, selectman, welcome back, and Edward Watson, please join us in saying the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have a public comment.
I'm Chris Licori. I run the cables department. Just want to make an announcement about something happening next month, September fourteenth. Channel nine, which is the government access channel, the channel you're watching this meeting on, if you're watching it on TV, is moving to channel eight. Also, it is going to be ten seventy-one, if anyone watches it higher up, but don't want anybody to be surprised. Nothing is happening that we're doing. Comcast just reshuffles their channel lineup every now and then, and that's where the new government access channel will be. Any questions?
No, thank you. Anyone else? Next up, we have discussion and possible votes. Number one on our agenda, approval of a one-day liquor license for Eric. Our back tapped beer truck LLC for a private event at Nichols Village on September the tenth, two thousand twenty-three, from twelve PM to three PM. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license. Looks like all the paperwork is here.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Unanimous, five. Number two, vote to endorse the liquor license for Pub ninety-seven of nine thirty-five Salem Street Restaurant License. The board held a public hearing on April the tenth, two thousand twenty-three, to approve the liquor license transfer.
I'll make a motion to endorse the liquor license to Pub ninety-seven, nine thirty-five Salem Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Kathy seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Unanimous. Number three, vote to approve and sign the common victual license for Carbone, Pub ninety-seven LLC, Peter Carbone, DBA, Doing Business As, Pub ninety-seven, nine thirty-five Salem Street. It's typo on there.
Make a motion for approval. Everything looks to be in order.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Unanimous. Number four, creation of trash and recycling committee. This is an agenda item by selectman Castren Ellis. Go ahead, Kathy.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good.
I'm wonderful, thank you.
So, we do have some names that are coming forward, and they should be ready for the next agenda, because I think we need to post the names right before we vote them typically, right? But you could put, you could put me on it.
It's up to the board. I'm okay with you on the board.
Okay, well.
And we'd be the trash queen.
That's right. Make the motion.
Everyone gets a title. No money, though. So what would you like to propose, Kathy?
You just make this board of selectmen appointment, and then I'll bring, put the other ones. The Board of Health is meeting on the twenty-fourth, and I believe their chairman is going to volunteer to be on it. And the Finance Board already met, and they voted to put Bill O'Neill on it, and I know Stephanie has volunteered. I haven't put her name on the.
So those will circulate up to us and will approve those at a later meeting?
Yep, yes.
Okay, but for here and now, you want me to, what, nominate you?
Yes.
Nominate.
Yeah, let's do that.
Make a motion to nominate Kathy Castren Ellis to the Trash and Recycling Committee. Seconded by Mac. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Unanimous. You win. All right. Did you want to discuss anything else on that topic?
Not at this time. I mean, we voted to have a seven-member board and then have liaisons from within departments in town so that we get as much information as possible, and obviously, any members of the public that have ideas or thoughts can forward them to Rebecca.
And if there's more than seven people interested, maybe we could modify our structure.
I would still just go with liaison, just because of the complexity of coordinating nine people to a meeting. I just.
All right. Well, you see.
Easier to get five people in one place than seven.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Next up, number five, creation of Public Rounds and Cemetery Commission in Building and Facilities Division underneath the Highway Department. This is a town administrator and a highway superintendent agenda item. Rebecca.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from this, as my husband is on the Cemetery Commission.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So at the last meeting, we had spoken with the chairman of the Cemetery Commission, Rockdower, who is present this evening, about the potential moving forward with this initiative. He had wanted to bring it back for his board to officially vote on. Since that time, the board has met, and they have taken an official vote, and have agreed to move forward with the initiative as discussed.
Okay.
And both the chairman and the superintendent, as well as the Building and Facilities Supervisor, is here to speak on behalf, if the board so chooses.
Sure. Would they like to address the board on the subject? Someone from Highway?
Randy Carroll, Highway Superintendent.
If you just could recap what transpired and let us know, and why, and where you're going.
Absolutely. So we had a meeting with the members of the Cemetery Committee last week. They actually had the meeting in our office, or Rebecca's office. They did an official vote with the parameters that we set forth, to move forward with cemetery falling under the highway, with the committee still with some oversight of budget in, you know, to make sure things, the transition is, goes smoothly.
So you come to some sort of an accord on that, to see how it goes, at least?
Correct. Make sure everybody's comfortable, and things are moving smoothly in the right direction.
And it's your recommendation to proceed?
Correct.
Spot have any questions for Highway Superintendent?
Question, brought up at our last meeting, and it was supposed to mitigate the situation as far as who's in charge, and how is that going to work? You can't serve two masters.
Right. So ultimately, the position will be a new hire that will step into the role. Our last, the superintendent that was up there, left for greener pastures, so we have a new, I believe he'll be renamed to supervisor, if I'm saying that correctly, and he'll obviously fall under my direction.
And just a follow-up. In the wintertime, how is that going to work? Will he be, at that point, be under the highway?
That's the plan. So he'll be doing a lot of the, we're going to work on him plowing a lot of the facilities and stuff that we have contractors do now, so the town will benefit from having a town employee, obviously with the benefit of being paid overtime, but it'll be a lot more, a lot less of an expense for the town not having a contractor in a truck doing that, that work, so it should be.
Be paid out of the highway fund for that, or be paid out of some?
It'll be the snow and ice.
So if, in the last town meeting, we appropriated for a superintendent, so there should be some extra money there. Maybe they could hire some part-time people.
That's the plan.
That's the plan.
Yep.
I'm all set, yeah.
All set. Thank you. Anyone else? Mac?
I'm good.
Jason?
I'm good.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for the creation of the Public Rounds and Cemetery Division and Building and Facilities Division under the Highway Department.
Second. Any discussions? All those in favor? Four and one abstention, or recusal.
Hi, my name's Rockdower.
I'm sorry. Did you want to talk on that issue?
I did.
I apologize. I'm sorry.
This is just a temporary thing right now, to see how it works.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't turn out, it'll go back to the way it is right now. Just so everybody's on the same page. We're going to give it a try, and the paperwork right now is being done by the town administrator.
And what's the, kind of the sunset deadline on that, to see, to try?
Well, I'm sure it'll be sometime this winter, because I believe it has to go before the town meeting to do away with the Cemetery Commission. And until that time, we're still as part of the overall setup.
Yeah, that's, you know, was brought up before, that we just see how it goes.
Right.
Try to work together and.
Yeah. But if it doesn't work out, and there's too many problems, we'll go back to the way it was before.
Man-made problems, man-made solutions. We can always.
Now's the time to do it, if we're going to do it. We're in the middle of a big transition. We've got help, so.
All right.
Just see how it goes.
Good luck. Thank you. Anyone else? I'm sorry. I missed him. All right. Next up. Kathy's back.
I'm back.
I think this is your agenda item here. Kathy Castren Ellis, Board of Selectmen Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-Four Goals. Did you request that?
Yeah, but they're for the board.
You wanted it on the agenda, so I'll let you spearhead it. Go ahead.
So, being an executive board, we don't run the day-to-day, so our, our charge is to, obviously, implement the wishes of the town expressed through ballot votes and town meetings, and to steer in an executive fashion the town. So, looking ahead to the next year for our goals, I do think that the Board of Selectmen should adopt policies and procedures, and that we should formulate these so that they can be applied within all town board and committees, to ensure that there is civil debate, both within committees and with, between persons that come before committees. And I think we're the top of the pile. I think we should take on that charge. We should be the model. So I thought that should be one. A second charge might be a second goal. I know that repeatedly during our Comcast negotiations, people expressed that they wish there was another choice in this town, and we have yet to kind of look into that and see whether we could bring in a second choice. Of course, that would put more work on our town administrator, but we could sort of do the initial exploration, perhaps, in the overall sense, see what other towns around us have. Sort of that thing. Just survey the towns around us and see if they are getting more than one provider for cable.
Cable guy?
Yep.
Cable guy raised his hands.
Also, on the executive level, would be any stand that this board, we're finishing up the Chapter Seventy study kind of in the next month or so, we need to, and this board would be the one that should coordinate with our representative and our senator, and encourage that we be given a voice on this issue for our town. And again, that would involve our town administrator going to a meeting, I'm sure. But I think as the executive board, we could formulate what our concerns are regarding the current stance of Chapter Seventy.
If I may, on your last point about more choices, I would love to see Breeze Line invited into town. I've tried very hard to get their attention. They have gone into Merrimack, which I never thought would happen. So I know when the board looked at this seven or eight years ago, that wasn't an option, but there's a lot more IPTV providers now, so it's a possibility if we can get their attention. So I would love to work with you on that, if that's something you want to explore. They might care more about hearing from the board than me.
I remember you mentioned that. That's why I put this on the list. Thank you. Good.
Kathy, all set?
Yeah, what other ideas?
Jason wanted to comment?
Go for it.
Yes, I did. I just wanted to comment about Breeze Line. I believe they also are going into Newbury Park, and they're working with Gabriel Charlie, as well as Ann Oliver. As they get closer and closer, it will be something that will be easier to get them interested in coming here.
So Jason could work on that, too.
Are you happy to work on it with Chris?
Yep.
Not something that we need to burden Rebecca with at this time.
Yep.
Kathy, all set?
Well, we have the trash contract, but we have a committee for that, so that's kind of our goal, but, yeah.
It's a looming issue that needs to be looked at, at least, the very least.
So the goal for this year would be to look at it and figure out what options we might want to look at, and then maybe get some opinions from the general town, you know, in form of a survey or something, as to what kind of options they would prefer.
Jason?
I think something that the board might want to consider as a goal is to strive to work better with the Finance Board in preparation and for the budget.
And what sense?
I think that we should be a.
What sense?
Well, I think we should.
Joint meetings?
I think we should have more joint meetings, where we can have open conversations about what, and when, and why, and how we should go about the process.
Invite them in. Mac?
I'm all set for now.
Mr. Watson?
I will reserve comment, maybe later.
My goals? Get up in the morning. Try to be a good person. All right. Next up, town administrator, fiscal year Two Thousand Twenty-Four Goals. I think you gave us some goals at one meeting, and it was, it was, it was so lengthy, I.
I like these goals.
I wanted you to stop. Do less.
So I essentially put together a memo for the board, just detailing those so that you could physically see them on paper, and document them for the board to review.
Just pretty much priorities. I mean, there's a whole laundry list there, but, I mean, don't spread yourself too thin is my opinion, but, you know, what's in the hierarchy and needs, what do we need? You know? I mean, hopefully, we don't have any more Prop Two and a Half override requests, you know? But, anyone else? We're good?
Do we want to vote these? Because.
I don't know what you want to do. Did you want to formalize them, or you want to make a motion, Kathy?
Well, I've looked, I've looked through them all. I mean, some of these are already in progress.
I think.
And some of these would be new, an intern program would be new for us.
I know, but do they require votes? I mean, we discuss them and.
Well, because of, I mean, yes, I'm not sure, just because the contract requires evaluation based on the goals, and these goals are kind of organized into the sections of that contract. So I just want to be fair that we don't suddenly come up with another list of goals halfway through the year and say.
Well, we got the Trash Committee. I mean, that's in motion, so, I mean, they'll evaluate it and come back and.
Right. I guess what I'm trying to say, maybe I'm not saying directly enough.
So it's premature to approve anything, no?
Well, I think for the, for the town administrator, she needs to know whether we want these goals to be her goals for the year, and I've read through them. The budget and finance work towards achieving the financial thresholds as established in our adopted financial policies, yes. Improve the capital, the capital improvement plan, working with the new building and facilities supervisor, yes. Competitive selection to review audit firms, I think we already said, yes, we want that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think we should formally accept by vote her, her list of goals for the year. So I would make a motion to accept the goals for the fiscal year Two Thousand Twenty-Four as outlined in the memorandum to the Board of Selectmen from our town administrator, Rebecca Oldham.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Sure.
I would just like to echo what you said, and that she should focus on not spreading herself too thin.
Yeah.
I'm coming burnt out.
That's my concern, is do less.
You got it.
You know, but, big picture, big fish, fry the big fish first. Anyone else? All right. All those in favor approving the goals of our town administrator? Unanimous. Thank you. That's it, under discussion and possible vote. Excuse me. We don't have any minutes to approve this evening, and we don't have any appointments of the board. So next up is town administrators' time. Rebecca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a couple of updates, one of which is to update the board that the governor has signed the fiscal year Two Thousand Twenty-Four budget. The estimated revenue numbers that came in from the state are totaling in about an addition of nine thousand dollars as to what we had originally estimated, so it is a good sign that we were a little conservative in our estimate, and we gave ourselves a little bit of room there. I also wanted to update the board that we finalized our fiscal, excuse me, our Two Thousand Twenty-Two Annual Town Report, and we are going to start assembling our Two Thousand Twenty-Three Annual Report. This year, I'm going to be utilizing ClearGov. It's the same software that we had utilized for our budgeting, and we were able to utilize that for a digital budget book. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to try and utilize that same platform to adjust for the town report. It will be a lot easier for departments to input the information, and it'll all be formatted nicely, and there'll be a smooth transition from department to department without each individual person having to write a letter and submit their information, and then have it be compiled by my office in particular. So I'm hoping that this will allow for a greater efficiency, and allow for those departments who really want to showcase what they accomplished that last year, they'll be able to do so. Performance reviews are underway. I've just completed four myself, and hopefully, I have about three more, and then we should be all set. And I believe other departments are also performing their annual performance reviews for their staff members. At the last meeting with the school, the monthly meetings that I have with the, the town administrator in Merrimack, and the town manager in West Newbury, as well as Superintendent Bartholomew and the business manager, we had discussed how we had not yet finalized the regional agreement. This was something that was originally discussed last year during budgetary season, but with the override and all the other information that came forward, we were unable to finish that conversation. So we would like to finalize those conversations, essentially. So the town manager in West Newbury was kind enough to put together a memo that his Finance Board and his Board of Selectmen had come together and made some recommendations. Some of them are pretty straightforward, that we have discussed already, you know, increasing the threshold to align with our capital improvement program. The other one was in relation to receiving timely reports about capital improvement, projects that are happening within our elementary schools, and communicating that across the board. So at the next meeting, or the following meeting, I would like to see if we could get that on the agenda for the board to have a more formal conversation. It's also going before the Finance Board at their next meeting. And then lastly, I just wanted to let the board know that just today, I applied for a Rural and Tribal Assistant Pilot Program application for two hundred thousand dollars. This is going to go towards, if we're successful, for the design and engineering of the Salem Street Dam, and the corrections that are necessary for that particular project, specifically a hydraulic analysis, topo survey, and all of the other studies that would be required in order for us to assemble a plan as to how we remediate the situation moving forward. And this would also include the specifications and plans that would be required for us to go out to bid. So hopefully, we're successful in our application, and that will take care of the initial design work, and then we'll still be on the search for about five hundred to a million dollars for the actual construction of the project.
Thank you. Any questions for Rebecca? Kathy?
I don't know if the entire board is interested in this, but I would, I would like to be interested to know more specifically about this dam. I mean, it's always been spoken about as a problem, as an area of concern, but to truly understand where the water is stopped and held, and how, who is making those decisions, and why would be really helpful to me to understand it. I mean, again, I know how much money it costs. It's a lot of money, but there used to be a thing at the old mill that climbed down and held the water. That seems to be gone. So I'm just not sure what we had, used to have, and what we have now, and why. And I'm not sure how to get an understanding of that.
We can have a more in-depth conversation at that, at a later meeting. It really deals with the watershed in its entirety, and how that plays through. Right now, we currently have a construction project over at the Uptak Culvert roadway. That's also leading to the water being held back a little bit, based upon the fact that they needed to drop down the new culvert and install, et cetera. Also, rain events, drought, increased rain precipitation, as we've seen in the last few days. All of that has a bearing on how much water is released, and how we release that water, and the stop logs, and when they're put in, and when they're removed. But we can definitely have a more detailed conversation, and I can bring in the Highway Superintendent, as well as the Conservation Commission, to weigh in on how those decisions are made, and why those decisions are made.
And the Uptak Road, is that, do you think it's going to meet the deadline?
We're very hopeful that they will meet the deadline, which is before Labor Day, so that it's completed prior to the school year beginning. That was part of the terms that we put into the contract when we hired the contractor and went out for bid. There was that one hiccup with the latest rainstorm event that led to them not being able to work during the timeframe, because it was just, there was just too much water. But even with that event, we're still set to hit our target, and fingers crossed that we will meet that target, so there will be no interruptions to the school schedule.
Great. Thank you.
Jason, anyone?
Not today.
Mac?
Good.
Edward?
Nothing.
Nothing from myself. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Next up, we have selectmen time and reports, statements for future agenda items, or to congratulate residents on accomplishments. Kathy, do you have any?
I've got some stuff.
Got some stuff? Let's hear it.
I do, I do. So first of all, I really think we should have like a shout-out wall, because this year's town, well, not this year, the Two Thousand Twenty-Two Town Report is by far the best town report I've ever seen. It's inclusive, it has information that it never used to include about grants and other things that are going on in the town. It's got color pictures, which are nice. It's just, reports from all the town departments are in-depth and include a ton of information. I just think it's a really great report, and Rebecca, I think.
How do you get it? When is it available?
It's available now.
It's available in hard copy in the front office out by the door, or in my office, and it's available online on the website.
Free?
Yes.
A buck.
Who paid for it?
Taxpayers.
Taxpayers.
We have a line item every year for about two thousand dollars for the production of the town report in paper format.
Okay. All right, sure.
My other stuff.
Yeah, proceed.
Okay, so last week, I was able to get a little bit of time with our town clerk to have a little discussion on two different issues. The first was, I had just recently attended on the internet a open meeting law seminar that was hosted by KP Law, and during that seminar, they raised some points about postings of meetings, and how some towns do this way, some towns do that way, and I wanted to sit with the town clerk, you know, ask for about fifteen minutes on this, to just ask her some questions about how we do, how we do all the postings, and how is that working? And so in the conversation, we talked about a couple of things, and Elizabeth was kind enough to make some really good suggestions. Currently, the town clerk's office is responsible for all the postings of all the town boards and committees that wish to meet, and she has information on the website that instructs anybody who's not familiar with when and how often you have to do that. when and how often you have to do that. It would be good to have another office designated to do postings. In the event the town clerk is unavailable or sick or away, for whatever reason, we can designate a second office. And she said the treasurer's office already has the timestamp, so that would be a natural second office to designate as being able to post meetings. And then this gets to another recommendation that was made during the seminars that the town should consider having a separate email address just for postings. So especially if you're going to have two different offices trying to make sure that all the postings go up, you would have all town boards and committee sending their information into one email address that would be just for a posting of meetings. That makes a lot of sense and I think Elizabeth, the town clerk, was okay with that. I also, listening to the seminar, went and looked at the list for the whole state of where everybody has formally voted to put their postings, right? So in Groveland in 2010, I think, the board of selectmen at the time voted to go digital, right? So if, according to Elizabeth, if our town computer goes down for six hours or more, all postings would have to be redone. And so I asked, well, is there any backup? What if we had to post and the computer's website's down? She said we'd have to ask our town attorney if we could have a backup. But when looking through the list of all the towns and cities, I did note that Merrimack and West Newbury and several other smaller towns are still doing a hard copy. And I'm sure they put it on their website, too, but their official posting is still a hard copy according to this list, if it's up to date. I think the list is with the attorney general's office. So I just thought that was something this board should put on its agenda. We should address the issue of a second office to back up the clerk's office and perhaps a sec, an email address that's just for boards and committees to send in postings if they're not hand-delivering them.
So the clerk's not here.
Right.
Who uploads the agenda? She takes a vacation. What happens?
Well, we have the assistant part-time, though, only. So yeah, so...
So they...
We need a second office to help back up when, you know...
And you can delegate that under the...
Evidently, the board of selectmen...
Under the statute, you can delegate that?
Well, under the statute, the town...
That's my question.
Well, let me say this, in the seminar, and they don't recommend this, they said best practice is your town clerk is in charge of this.
Of course.
But they said in some small towns, all the chairs of the different boards and committees just post their own meetings.
Well, we can have belts and suspenders. I think they, you know, if the statute requires the clerk to post, then that's the statute.
I don't think that's a...
We can make the boards post also.
Right, but...
As Plan B or just double up.
I mean, we can ask the town attorney, but I believe my understanding from the seminar is that that's not a law. It's just the, it's the best practice.
Okay. Well, we'll find out whether, definitively whether or not it's permitted and there should be a Plan B or maybe just post and have the chairs post and have also the clerk post and then if they both don't post, then I guess you reschedule.
Right. And my second conversation issue was the electronic voting at town meetings. And I know we've kind of kicked it around here and there, but we've never gone further on it. And Elizabeth said she could look into some sites that she's familiar with. She says there could be some concern about the accuracy of the digital voting at town meeting, but more importantly, how many of those devices do you need? How do you know how many? How do you know if you're going to have 200 people or 400 people? So it would take a little exploration to figure this out. But after meeting with the clerk, she said it's, she said the following, that the board of selectmen is in charge of the setup of the town meeting and the moderator would be in charge of how it's run, whether you do digital or hands or yell, whatever we do. She's in charge of recording the minutes of that meeting and checking people in. That's her responsibility. But still, I like to get her feedback on it.
I'd like to do it for privacy. Personally, I don't think it's anyone's business how you vote.
Here's what I was thinking. This is just random off the top of my head. When you say, okay, maybe some of the devices don't always work that well, right? But right now, we do a voice vote and the moderator uses his judgment to determine that the majority has voted yes. And it's pretty obvious usually, right? So if you did it digitally, as long as there was enough of a difference, wouldn't you just go with the same? But I think importantly, too, I think it might give us some valuable information about that minority point of view, you know what I mean? So that we understand that this many people didn't want this voted. It's good to know both sides of things. And the two-thirds vote, again, you could apply the same thing. If it looked like the digital vote was too close, we could still go for hand vote. So my only concern would be do the people in the town want to do this?
No.
One town, Long Meadow, that did a study on it, they took groups of people, they went to the council on aging, they went to maybe the library and some other, and they tested out the various equipment to see how people felt about using it and what they thought of it. So is this something that we'd like to look into for future agenda?
Sure.
Okay. Good. I was going to contact Bill Dark and kick it back to the town administrator.
I think we should contact a couple of the companies that offer that service.
Yep.
And then have them come in with a proposal.
I have...
They're usually on standby the night of the elections with the, with the units.
Long Meadow looked at four different ones. I could...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It sounds to me like it's getting to, well, it's a violation of the open meeting. It's not, it's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
And under selectman's time...
Sure.
...should not be used to initiate a discussion, which it seems to have crossed that.
Okay.
And it's not on the agenda. So if...
Fair enough. We'll just leave it at she asked if it could be a possible agenda item.
Yep. Thank you.
Point taken. Thank you. Any other issues?
No.
That's right. We can't deliberate. Jason?
Yes. I'd like to thank the highway department for all the hard work that they put in after this most recent storm. I know they don't always get the recognition that they deserve because not all the residents see what they have to do and what they go through because they're not immediately affected by it, unlike the power company when they do something, everybody knows right away because you have power or you don't have power. But they did put in a lot of work and I think they did a phenomenal job, so I really appreciate it.
Mark?
Good.
Ed?
I don't have anything.
I don't have any. Summertime mode. Everything's working smoothly. Next up, hold their unfinished business. Does anyone have any of that? Ed?
Nothing.
Mark? Jason?
Oh.
Kathy?
Not at this moment, just the, the old mill restoration project is still going to go forward and I am going to reach out and see if I can help out on the signage issue for that and other sites. I feel like everybody has a lot to do. Maybe I could help on that.
Other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting? Are there any? Ed?
Nothing.
Mark? Jason? Kathy? All right. We have some correspondence that's been submitted to the board. Everyone have a copy of the letter from Terry Grimm? Letter from Stephanie Bartelt, it looks like. Langley Adams Library awarded $15,000 grant. And the board of selectmen meeting minutes dated July 17, 2023. Does everyone have those?
Was there another letter from Mike Dempsey? Did I miss?
No, there is another letter that came in from a resident concerning an issue as well as an older letter submitted in 2022.
This is in a packet, right?
That's referenced as part of the letter that was submitted in 2023.
I get what you're trying to tell me. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Are we good?
We have the letters. What happens next?
I don't know. You want to talk about them?
No, they're not on the agenda.
Okay.
Maybe we put them on the agenda for a conversation.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Okay. They're just attached. They're just attached. Anyone that wants to read them, but they are not on our agenda to discuss. Our next regularly scheduled meeting of the board of selectmen will be Monday, August 28, 2023 at 6:30 PM. That's all we have.
Mr. Chair, sorry.
That's all we have this evening, right?
I just, I forgot to mention, my apologies. At the next meeting on August 28, there is plans proposed to have a joint meeting in the beginning to discuss the master plan with the planning board.
Yeah.
So I did want to just remind the board that that's being proposed by the master plan steering committee as well as the planning board. No official votes are being taken. However, they would like to have the meeting with the board of selectmen advertised on TV and to the public for them to also attend and listen to a very brief presentation by the consultant regarding the work that's taken place and to solicit any additional feedback before coming back to the board with a more final report. So again, if the chairman so chooses, we'd like to make that on the board for the next meeting for a brief 15-minute presentation by the consultant with the planning board.
Are they ready to go? They'll be ready for us.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll meet Wednesday and talk about what makes the list. Is there a motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
No, I'll make it. Motion to adjourn at 7:12 PM.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Ed?
We haven't had a motion to, we haven't had a second yet.
I seconded.
You can. You made a motion.
She cut me off. I gave it to her.
I cut him off.
Oh, okay.
I yielded. Can have it, Kathy. I'll take the second. Any discussion? Thank you for the discussion. That was the discussion, Ed, right?
Okay.
Mark, you got anything?
Well, can I do the discussion?
You talk too much tonight, Mark.
Can I do the discussion?
Sure. Go ahead.
All right. I'll reserve till the next meeting.
All right. Light agenda. Hopefully, everyone's enjoying their summer and we'll see you next time. All those in favor of adjournment? Unanimous. Good evening.